Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Londonderry Town Council Budget Workshop Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Okay, first things first, please, everyone, please comply with the Governor's Order mandating masks this evening. Couple of quick housekeeping things before we get going here. One is, is that, did the tax bills go out today?
Justin went, no. I don't know where Justin went.
Did the tax bills go out today?
They should have, yes.
So I'll take that as an affirmative. They're due on the 23rd of December? Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, the Londonderry tax bills went out today. We had, just for some clarification purposes, the tax rate is $20.11. The municipal piece is $4.66. The county piece is $0.86. Local education is $12.66. And state education is $1.93. In all of the tax bills, we have sent out a worksheet with them so that people can see exactly where their dollars are going. So for full transparency, and this goes out to commercial and residential, the tax rate is the same. So, for example, if you have a home that is valued at $400,000, $1,864 of your tax bill goes to the town, which is 23.17 percent. The county would get $344. That is 4.28 percent. Local education, $5,064 of your bill will go to local education. That's $5,000 out of your $8,000 that you pay. And then state education, $722, 9.6 percent goes to the state. So if there's any questions about these, please do call Town Hall. Someone there will be happy to explain them to you. But I want to be clear about certain things. One is, is that there was money by both forms of government taken out of their undesignated fund balances to lower the tax rate. A total of $625,000, that's $625,000, came out of the undesignated fund balance from the town. A total of approximately $400,000 came from the school side of the business. So just a little bit over a million dollars, which Justin takes our tax rate down about 20 cents, right? I'm in the, I'm in the right ballpark though, right? So ladies and gentlemen, your tax dollars helped lower your rate for this year. So please be aware of those things. And if you, and again, if you have any questions about the tax bill, the reason it has gone out late is, is that a number of the people in the state government are still working from home. So it has delayed getting the tax rates solidified with the state by, you know, two to three weeks. So we thank you, and, and please bring your questions forward around this. Okay?
The one million would be about 21 cents, so you were in the ballpark.
About 21 cents, so we're right in the ballpark. Perfect, thank you, Justin. Okay, let's get into the, into the whole budget piece. So what I'm going to do here is, if there's no objection, is we were given a worksheet at the Saturday meeting. And, you know, it's this worksheet that I've written all over, and it's, there is a red section on it which talks to the, the exact dollars that we were looking for, for the 2.5 percent cut. The ask for tonight is, is that I'm going to start here with Department 01, and work my way down to Department 33, so that you can, the $861,250 can be explained, $250,000, yeah, $250 can be explained. So I'm going to start walking through these, whether it's the town manager, the finance director, or the department head that needs to come and answer these, please come forward at that time. The, is that okay with everybody? All right? So with that said, we have Department 01, the Town Council.
Mr. Chairman, so just a few items I would like to go over as we get into these. First off, you'll have an updated, a revised sheet of the line items in front of you that you all received over email over the weekend, but they look like this, with the line-by-line, the summary on the front page, and then the actual lines in more detail on the following three pages. It's similar to what you received on the Saturday of the budget presentations, but it's just been revised with more items in it. I also just want to go through a very brief addendum to the presentation, just so everyone understands the numbers they're looking at as we go through these. And you have this addendum in front of you. So again, just to remind everyone, the default budget came in at $36,630,879. The proposed budget with a 2.5 percent reduction, which is $861,000 and change, is $35,769,622. The options that are listed in front of you tonight total about 2.67 percent. So we actually gave more options than the 2.5 percent. That totals about $918,407. Of that, $549,000 and change are personnel-related items, and 368,676 are non-personnel-related items. When we're looking at the appropriations, expenses can be categorized into two groups. You have your personnel costs, which are salaries, benefits, retirement, and taxes, and you have your non-personnel costs. The non-personnel costs have gone up over 10 years, even though the budget hasn't, because we've been in that default budget process. So those lines have pretty much remained stagnant for the 10 years, but the costs have go up, have gone up now. Why do I bring that up? Because you'll see on the next table, the result has been that the non-personnel costs on average are quarter million to $300,000 over expended annually. And they're only covered by the quote-unquote savings you have in your personnel lines. So we don't actually start really at zero. We're already about a quarter million dollars in the hole every budget we go into on the non-personnel expenses, because we're paying for more than what we're budgeting for. So I also stress that it's a bottom-line budget that we manage here, and the reason I say this is because the annual underspends in some lines are offset, and then some by the annual overspends in other lines. So it's not just enough to look at the underspends as we're going through this and say, well, historically, we're not spending here. You have to look at it in totality of where we're also overspending lines annually as well. And then, as I said, the savings are simply achieved by the personnel lines, budgeting personnel and healthcare costs at 100 percent. And what that means is, is that every healthcare plan every year is budgeted at 100 percent as if it were a family plan, even though that isn't what happens, that's how we've budgeted to be on the conservative side, if that actually happened. Same thing with personnel. We budget that every position is filled, even though we have vacant positions over the year, where people leave, they retire, and that sort of thing. And so there's hiring delays, there's freezes, that's where your personnel savings come from, and that's the trick to managing the town budget, is you're paying for the over expenditures on the non-personnel-related costs by your personnel savings. And so on the next sheet, as I said, you have a table there that by department breaks down. On the top portion, those are all of your non-personnel expense items by department, and as you'll see, the average there is $284,000 over. And then you have underneath that your personnel lines, which on average have been, looks like $584 or $689,000 under. There's just a few anomalies on this that I want to point out that skew these numbers. In 2017, on the non-expense line under Personnel Administration, it looks like we were $349,000 to the plus. That's because that year, our insurance rate, the guaranteed maximum was 15 percent, which is what we budgeted for, and it came in at 3 percent. So that, that was a big delta between what we budgeted for and what it came in at, and that's why there was that big savings in that year. In 2018, similar thing happened with the insurance line, and, and then in 2020, two things happened that year. One, we had a very hard budget freeze, especially in the personnel line because of the pandemic, and that's why we had over a million dollars in savings on the personnel line that year, which was this past fiscal year. But we also had a very large expenditure in the fire department, $481,000, a portion of that was an overage on the fire department building. So as we go into these line-by-lines, the next page on that addendum, you have your mandatory, these are, these are non-personnel expenses. You have your mandatory expenses, and what I mean by that is, these are your telephone services, maintenance and repairs, training for police, vehicle repairs, snow removal, library services. Those are what I would categorize as mandatory expenses. We also have non-mandatory annual expenditures that have not been budgeted, that we have been paying for every year. What are those things? Here's just a few of them. The deliberative session awards, food for the election day workers, cleanup of the town forest, including tree cutting, invasive plant springs, the crush stone path we put down, the lights on the common, cleaning up of the various trails, repairs to recreation fields, drainage repairs, lighting at the fields, the Veterans Day breakfast we annually pay for, the Thanksgiving Day baskets we pay for, a portion of those that go out to our needy in town, replacement of flags in town for the various parades, building signage, et cetera. All of that stuff, we do not budget for, but we've been paying for it. So when you see those over expenditures, you've got to realize there's stuff we're paying for that is not budgeted for, and we're only paying for it through the personnel savings. And just the last piece of this before we go into the, the lines. In prioritizing, when we came up with the priorities for the budget reductions, consideration was given to the town's core competencies. Basically, those are the items we are statutorily required to do by law. The only line we did not touch and give a, give a reduction to was the welfare line, because we felt that was counterintuitive to this exercise. We're going through this to do reductions, to help out the taxpayers in town. We didn't feel like hitting the, the welfare line was appropriate in doing that. And the last thing is, obviously, reductions aren't easy, but things that we can live without, that we felt did not affect the town's core competencies, were given the highest priority and include zero funding. And those things were Old Home Day, the fireworks, the Morrison House Historical Society, the Heritage Commission, the Arts Council, and the CHS Healthy Londonderry Contract, which totals up a little more than $50,000. So with that, that's just an introduction to going into these line-by-line.
Okay, so is Colleen speaking under Building, Department 24?
No, Colleen is going to speak under Community Development, which is...
Oh, Department 33.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, all right, Colleen, I understand you have to be someplace, so we'll, we'll go from the bottom and then back to the top.
And Justin, if you want to just give the brief overview of the lines that we reduced here, and Colleen, you can just get into a little bit more detail as far as what it means for cutting services.
So I'm looking at $11,202 on the sheet you gave me on Saturday.
So do you have the new updated sheet that Kevin provided today?
It's nice.
Do you have it?
I'm working.
Okay. It's a little less, it's $10,063.
You can correct them, and then you can tell me why they were corrected. All right, so it's $10,263?
Nope, just $10,063.
All right, so let's hear what's involved there.
Okay, so, and thank you, I appreciate the council being willing to, to take my department first. As the, so our cut of $10,063 is coming from our Management Services line. As the council may recall back in FY 2016, the department, the preceding years had been restructured and reorganized, and at that time, the council had significantly reduced the salaries and, and personnel expenses, and added some funding to our Management Services line. This was a reflection of the fact that the department was going to be going away from using in-house personnel to do a number of updates in term, and relying more on consulting services when it came to items like ordinance updates, regulation updates, and using outside consultants for those items, some of the economic development efforts. So our department has, over the past several years, tried to be very fiscally conservative on spending those monies. We have done a number of updates internally, so we are comfortable that we can, can tighten up and adjust to this reduction, but I would just caution that what it does result in is, if there are projects in terms of wanting to update the sign ordinance, wanting to implement what are resource management tasks, some of those items might take additional time to be implemented if they need to be done by staff rather than through outside consulting firms, and some of those may just need to be, you know, delayed more outright, rather than just taking more time. They might need to wait for a future fiscal year when we do have the funds to accomplish. So if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen.
And Mr. Chair, just the reason why the numbers changed on the sheet you have this evening from the one you got on Saturday is we included more reductions on the revised sheet, and so the overall reductions in each department went down a little bit.
All right. Department 1, Town Council, what's the $303 for?
This represents 2.5 percent, and if you look at the historical spends, typically, the council line is over by approximately $2,000 annually, because it pays for things like, as I said, the Veterans Breakfast, the Thanksgiving Day Baskets, the Deliberative Session Awards, the Tent Rental for Leadership Londonderry, just various items like that. There's really no expense line for the council. It's about $400, or excuse me, $700 beyond salaries. And so things, those things that we've been paying for would be cut.
Town Managers Line, $16,477.
Yep, these are, these numbers are all related to overtime in the Town Managers Budget. Typically, we haven't been spending our overtime amounts in my budget, as most of it. Any time over is mostly given in administrative time rather than overtime, so those are the reductions there.
Okay, Budget Committee, 405. Town Clerk Tax Collector, $12,129.
Yes. Sherry, would you like to come up? Justin, do you want to give a quick overview?
Yes, so first off, if you look at these lines, you'll see that there's quite a few over with the Town Clerk budget this year. We went through, and the current fiscal year we're in is a three-election fiscal year, which inquires, acquires more spending out of the elections portion of the Town Clerk line. So for this year, or for fiscal year '22, we adjusted the budget to appropriately show the money that we took away from the Town Clerk line originally to supplement the election line this year. So if you look at the over/under default, you'll see they're all over the place. That's because when you budget default, it is what the line was last year. So if we moved a line item from the elections line up to the Town Clerk line, in default, that money is still in the elections line. So if you add up all these together, they will equal the $12,129. The main cuts are coming from their Town Clerk Management Services in $4,921, in the postage supplies in $2,860, in their furnitures and fixtures in $1,600, and in their part-time salaries in their elections lines of $2,748.
Perfect, Justin. We were looking back at 2010 compared to where we are now with our staff, and actually, we're down one full-time position that required benefits. So in that area, we're much thinner than we used to be. And the cuts that we can make, and we definitely can, but it just would make it uncomfortable for our residents, things that they've really grown to enjoy and appreciate, our dog cards and reminders about dog registration, our renewal postcards and emails and things like that. Of course, emails don't have a cost necessarily, but they, we still have many residents that love to get the mail and love to have those card reminders. We also have a courier service that takes our deposits every day. We do the closeout each day, and they're picked up for us on a daily basis. That's $4,000 of the amount that you see, and we could eliminate that, but then a safety does become a problem. And we have written a couple grants too, so we've been trying in our department. We've actually brought in $15,000 just in the last few weeks with grants through the Civic Plus Grant Program through the state. So, does anyone have any questions?
Questions, just Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the addition of the new check-in computers at their elections, at what point do we pay for those, and what line? Maybe that's a question for you, Kevin. What line would that come under?
So those were paid for through the Gopher Reimbursement Fund out of last year's budget. So we paid for them from their, I believe, Management Services, and then once we received the reimbursement, we processed it, so it was charged to our grant account.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, there, there is still maintenance that'll be required each year for the machines, but it's minimal compared to, you know, now the, the cost has been covered, which is great. And the benefits really, you know, proved themselves at the general election, at the primary too. Residents seem to really be pleased with them and the efficiency.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Joe?
This is real, this is really for Justin probably. I'm just trying to catch up to, going pretty fast here, so it's good. Town Manager was off on the proposed 2022 proposed budget by $500. We had, on Saturday, we had $573,356, and now it's proposed at $856. And it sounds, it sounds like, I think it's maybe the same answer that you answered earlier, is that the numbers shifted based on what the proposed budget is versus the new changes? Is that, is that why? Because even on Town Clerk, it was $479 on Saturday, 2022 budget, and now it's $485.
Correct. As I stated at the last council meeting, that we were adding more additional cuts into this, and so it was going to shift the numbers slightly because there were more cuts proposed. I wanted to give more options to the council to review, but, but it shifted, because you go by the 2.5 percent, it shifted the amounts that came out of each budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Department 5, the Town Clerk Tax Collector? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just to also just add, in addition to overtime from the Town Managers' budget, there were also reductions made to Management Services, Printing Services, which is for our annual report, travel and mileage, I just don't travel much, seminars and workshops, and office supplies.
Okay, Department 8, Finance. So I'm looking at $19,088.
Correct. So I have worked with the unions to look to reduce one of our positions from a full-time to a part-time. This will limit the department's ability to push things to them and defer the work across the board, which could lead to different impacts depending on what the priority takes at this point. Currently, we're able to push things down to this position that frees up either myself or my controller to take on larger tasks such as grants or things of that nature, or we task them with ensuring that we are compliant with the Department of Labor aspect, as well as taking on various projects regarding our payroll system.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Joe?
Yep, so just trying to follow this again. This one, this number didn't change, so that, that throws out our, our calculation of the percentages that can shift.
Okay.
So I'm confused as to what numbers you're looking at.
So looking at the ones that were handed out on Saturdays...
The booklet with the binder on it, and the sheet that you just passed out today. That's all, that's all we're trying to, we're trying to follow the 2022 default budget. Because when I want, when I want to take a look at things like tuitions, management services, dues, and office supplies, obviously, I have to refer to that, I'm just trying to line it up.
No, Joe, you, in front of you today, you got the top page, which is the summary of all of the departments, and then underneath that, there were three pages with all of the actual lines within each department.
Right.
So that's what you should be going by now.
Yep, no, I know, I can see it clearly. I'm saying that this, John, this number here, 614,561, it's this, this number matches. All the others haven't so far, that's all I'm asking. That's all. Easy enough. Especially if we're, you know, I work with numbers, so especially if you're going to be taking a percentage and you're going to calculate it on all the departments.
And he's right.
Okay, so I guess, let me throw in this caveat. Not every department was 2.5, some were more than 2.5, and some were a little less than 2.5.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The reason why the finance didn't change is because it's the same exact cut that we had listed on there from that Saturday. So the percentage...
No, no, no.
Hey, I paid for the, oh, here it is, okay. So, that, the finance one didn't change because it was an actual personnel change, and so the amounts won't change in it because it's still, it wasn't based on a 2.5 percent, it was based on a position changing from full-time to part-time. So that's why those amounts didn't change. All good questions, though.
That's all, just wondering. And this one's the same thing.
Okay, are we all set?
Yep.
Okay. Assessing, Department 09, $10,500.
Yeah, so this amount is from a consulting contract that is in their budget. This has been used for our utility updates. It's also been used for our Granite Ridge consulting fee, and currently, we're using a consultant in the assessing department. We're considering going in that direction for the foreseeable future with the council's approval, and so we do not plan to cut the entire consulting contract because the monies have been used. However, we did believe we could reduce it by $10,500.
Any questions on Department 09, Assessing? Department 10, Information Technology.
Justin, you want to give the update on this?
$1,276.
Yes, so this will be coming out of general expenses and machinery and equipment. These account lines have both been over expended by a good amount, and essentially, what will happen is, when they run out of money, if something breaks, it breaks.
So if, I think you need to get, you think, think... I think you need to get, things don't necessarily break in IT. They either, you know, they either have, there's multiple things that can happen. And there are systems that you can't live without. So what are you going to do when they break?
Well, this goes back to the mandatory versus non-mandatory. So, yeah, if there's things that we can't live without, we just have to find the money elsewhere. If you look at, again, the historical spending on the expense, the non-personnel expense lines in IT, they are annually typically overspent by $22,000. And so reducing their line further is just less money to overspend, if you will, in that line. But obviously, yes, there are, there's software items and hardware items that, if they're necessary to the function of the operations, we're going to have to replace it. But if there's things that can be put off, if it's a hardware item that breaks, but there's a, I don't know, a backup somewhere that can be used, then we'll just go that route.
We'll fix it and have it work at a lesser capacity. That's what we'll essentially do. We'll go through the fixing process, and it will probably work at a lesser capacity than if we were to replace it.
Any questions on IT? Okay. Legal. So we're going to try to get sued, Les?
So, a few years ago, Justin, you might have the year 1617, we did increase the legal line. We did that by moving lines around within the non-personnel expense areas because we were, again, overspending annually in our legal department. Since we moved those monies around, we've typically had some money that has gone unspent in that line. And so, in doing that, we're just hoping we don't go over there.
Okay, so maybe what we're going to do is, is try to utilize our assistant town solicitor more?
We are already doing that. So that's a, it's good cost savings to do that.
Okay. Any questions on legal? General Government, 15.
So if you look at the general government lines on the attached spreadsheet, you'll see those are things that I mentioned earlier, such as Old Home Day, the Morrison House, the Heritage Committee, Cultural Affairs Committee. Those make up the bulk of the general government reductions.
Anybody have any questions on general government? So the only thing I'm going to say is, is that a community is about its people. And not only about the people who work here, but the people who live here. While you may be able to reduce some lines, I would, anyone who wants to eliminate Old Home Day, let's see how we do with that. Maybe, you know, we didn't have to do it this year, but I would, you know, they're talking about, hopefully, 70% of the population being inoculated by the spring.
Ms. Jim?
And so we have to be, we'll revisit these lines. Yes, Joe?
So just really quick, taking a look at the electrical services line. So every year, we run in the 30s to 40s. 2020, we were at 8,000. And I understand that that might be an anomaly. I'm just wondering what the anomaly is.
Joe, can we repeat what line it is?
General Government.
Oh, General Government.
4410-00, it's electrical services. Of the governmental, general governmental departments.
Department 15?
So the average over the past, since 2016, has been about $315 that we've underspent in that line. While the telephone services in that line has been overspent by $11,428.
So it looks like in 2020, it's just a matter of, we put it in the wrong area. It's in water services versus electrical because every year it's, you know, that's what we're looking at. When we look at these spreadsheets, we look at the lines. And I understand what you guys talked about earlier, but charging the right line is obviously important in this situation.
So I'm not sure why you're saying, give me one second, let me pull up water services for last year, if you don't mind.
Yep. 4410.
4410 is electrical. 4412 is...
That's what I said, electrical. Yep, $9,500, and it's been running, you know, 30,000 to 40,000 every year. I was just wondering what the anomaly is. Like, we didn't, obviously, we're getting bills then. I was just wondering why it was so much lower.
Electrical has been running, well, 49K. I don't know where you're getting your numbers. I wish my electric bill was...
Yeah, you can take a look at it if you want.
No.
Yeah, it's okay. Just where my finger is, you can take a look at it. Electrical?
Yeah, that's not right.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so... So that looks like they got reversed.
Yep.
How you all feel about marking for the 30th? We do a little bit more deeper dive on Department 15 and see exactly what's in there and share that with the public.
Are you saying it got reversed?
All right, so for November 30th, we're going to do a deeper dive on Department 15 and go a little bit deeper into that and share that, what it actually costs to run all our buildings and everything, which I'm assuming is all in there. Okay, we'll hold back on that one. That's a $21,927 saving. And we're going to go to November 30th and go deeper into Department 15. Cemeteries, $950. Are we just picking a number, or is there a reason for that number?
This was a two and a half percent cut on the cemeteries. And Stephen, if you want to come back up here. Essentially, there's various maintenance items that have to be done, headstones that need to be fixed, landscaping.
Yeah, just to make sure it's clear, this budget amount is, the town, we have eight cemeteries in town that I have to maintain. There's only one cemetery left in town that we can sell cemetery plots, and that's the Pillsbury Cemetery. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that as we get into the capital reserve, that there is a need. But anyways, the bottom line is the maintenance, lawn care, spring/fall cleanup, weed control in the stone walls, maintenance of the entrances and exits, as well as headstone repair. Each year, we try to repair a certain amount of headstones, especially in the Valley Cemetery, which is the second oldest cemetery in town. Last year, we did 30 headstone repairs, and that came in around $6,000. A headstone repair is very expensive, but we'll just back off the amount of the headstone repair. We'll reduce the mowing if we can. Those are the two areas that I can cut.
Thank you. Any questions on cemeteries? Insurance, $220,512.
So as I mentioned at the outset, the way we budget the insurance line, especially for the health insurance, is we budget everyone at a family plan going into the year. And so typically, there's a savings through the year because not everyone chooses a family plan. What this, and you'll notice this is more than two and a half percent, but what this particular reduction does is we're now giving it our best estimate of the types of health insurance plans that employees will choose based on the historical data of what they're in and what the last people to be in there had. And so this yields a savings. Though, again, this is one of those items where if we guess wrong, we still have to pay for it. So we'll just have to, you know, freeze or reduce another place in order to pay for it if it turns out that more people select either family plans or two-person plans over, say, single-person plans, or family plans over two-person plans. Justin, was there anything you wanted to add in that?
No, I just want to make it clear, we only budget the open positions at the family plan, and those are the ones that'll be impacted here.
Right, yes. So if, and thank you for clarifying that. If they're existing positions, they're budgeted at whatever people have selected. Though, again, I want to emphasize that oftentimes, people get married and they have children, and that happens within a fiscal year. And suddenly, they go from a two-person to a family plan. And so, anyway, so that's what this reduction represents.
Any questions on insurance?
Kevin?
Yes?
To the town manager. Kevin, if there is a tragedy, let's say, in our first responders, and we lose a firefighter or we lose a police officer, do we have any provision to continue to carry the family for some period of time for insurance?
I don't believe for insurance purposes, no. They would be eligible for COBRA. But if it's a workers' compensation injury, you know, if it happened on the job, then there are certain provisions that would kick in there for the family. But we do have provisions in the union contracts that the family would be entitled to any of the payouts that would be made of, you know, accrued vacation, sick time, that sort of thing.
Okay, so that's by contract, it's not discretionary?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything further on insurance? We had a resident come in here and ask about working on, you know, having insurance and working collectively with the schools on that. Just for the record, the last two budget years, the council approached the school board. We have not said anything to them this year. And the school was not interested in collaborating with us on insurance in the last two budget cycles.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes?
Just wanted to request if we can get an email copy of the book replacement, because the numbers are a lot different in the book as well. So if we can just get sent on our email, the replacement, because it says 470, 4,718, 462 in the book, and it's, you know, 4,523 here. So I just want to make sure I have the right numbers that I'm working on.
All right, we'll take that offline.
Yep.
Okay, next item is conservation. Then you just did the two and a half percent cut there, I see.
Yes, $84 from the conservation line. Marge, I don't know if you want to say anything about the $84, but it was a two and a half percent out of their allocation of $3,350.
Okay.
Can I speak quickly on the insurance that Joe was speaking of?
Sure, of course.
So that is actually, we recently had a couple employees who have changed plans. And as they have changed plans recently, I made the adjustment as necessary to the sheet that you're looking at.
Okay.
We'll provide everyone with an updated sheet, but I do want to point out, this isn't the first budget cycle where we haven't, we've continually updated numbers as we've gone along because things do change in positions throughout the budget season. So we tried to have as close to what the actual numbers are by the time we go into the first public hearing. So we will get those updated numbers out, too.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Absolutely.
May I address that?
Certainly, feel free.
Yeah, I think that it's important, when you look at the three or four or five lines on here, that are the largest ones. So that's kind of really the only reason why I brought it up. I mean, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 are the biggest numbers there, so...
Sure.
An insurance number is definitely something I'd be looking at. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Department 20, police.
Sure. Chief Hart, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Justin, you want to give a quick overview of what the reductions here are?
Yes, if you look through, the police department is going to be lowering their rental and leases, their office supplies and their custodial by about $28,000. And that also includes special investigation services, machinery and equipment, crime prevention. And they will also be reducing their staff by two people, which then impacts all the other lines that follow with that, such as Medicare, retirement, life insurance, and things of that nature.
Go ahead, Chief, I just want to show the other chief something.
Questions?
Chief, could you describe the flavor of the two people that we just talked about? What kind, are they uniformed?
Yes, they would be persons who would be what we call patrol officers or uniformed officers who would be responding for two calls for service. Part of that analysis would be, how do we allocate the resources that the town needs? And, you know, for anybody who's driven on any of the roads in London Dairy recently, really, traffic is one of our larger problems. So we try to address that with the uniformed officer in a marked unit. So we'd be thinking about, how do we do that best? Do we reduce detectives by one? Do we reduce SROs by one or possibly two? How do we make that work?
Thank you, Chief.
Other questions? John?
Logistically, how do you make those cuts in the two patrol officers? Are we not, for example, are we not filling open positions? Layoffs? How do you accomplish that?
We are currently, we do have open positions. So we just cut that from the number of billeted positions that are assigned to the police department, reducing our overall force by two and simply not go forward with that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Steve, the chief, regarding the added two cuts, in terms of safety, would you say that, it's hard to say if the reduction's going to create more of a safety issue, right? Because you don't know what, you know, if the incident's going to be increasing more in the next year or not, right?
Actually, it's a two answer, two pieces to the answer. The answer is, yes, it's hard to predict the future, about anything. But what I can say based on historical data, what I can say based on historical data is that all calls for service across the board are going up. So back in, you may recall, back in March, April, May, we had that approximately eight to nine weeks where we were shut down. And we really limited the activity of officers, both in uniform and detectives responding to calls. We changed our protocol so that people called in rather than us responding. Other than car accidents, every other benchmark, so arrests, vehicle stops, general calls for service, summonses, warnings, are all going to meet or exceed last year. Now, that's with two months, really, with very, very limited activity because of the COVID-19 pandemic. This is not out of line with what we've seen in the past, say, 10 years as London Dairy has gone through dramatic development. Every year, calls for service increase, arrests tick up slowly, but motor vehicle goes up by a serious percentage, and so do motor vehicle accidents. So if I, I'm not in the business of predicting the future, but if I had money to bet, I would say those are going to increase, and that debilitates the quality of life here in our town.
Thank you.
Chief, I stepped away for a second. I don't know if this question was asked. How many officers are we, how many officers are we down at the airport?
We're down three at the airport right now.
So the airport's asked us to reduce three officers to help them save expense. We're contractually obligated to provide the service to them when they go back to full strength.
That's correct.
So if we were to eliminate openings, we would not be able to fulfill that contract.
I can't say that.
It would be more difficult.
But it would be significantly more difficult. That's correct.
Because we would have to go back to the voters, ask for them to reinstate those pieces as we've asked them to put those in the budget before.
Well, in fairness, it's slightly more complicated. You're exactly on the right track.
Okay, why don't you let me know what it is?
So we manage the number of empty positions that we have against those airport demands so that we never have to have layoffs. Different than many police departments in our state, layoffs would be a death knell to the kind of high-quality officer that we bring to our community to serve. to the kind of high-quality officer that we bring to our community to serve the people of our community. So while, right now, we can, it would be difficult, but we could move those folks back to the airport, there'd be a change in service, however.
I'm going to avoid the political word, I just think people are not looking right now, especially in these times, to, at least I haven't gotten any feedback, in the community that people are looking for less first responders than what we currently have. And I know we're going to get into next Monday about the whole hiring process we have around all the employees that we, that we've gone through over the last ten years.
Well, based on the calls for service we get, and the calls I get, I would say your assessment is correct.
So any, yeah, I'm sorry, so Tom first, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, as I look at the basic blocking and tackling of the police department, I'm thinking beyond that, as we proceed into the future, there's more, as the world changes, your work changes too, and especially in the area of cybercrime. And with the relatively large senior population we have, I know that they are especially susceptible to some of this cybercrime. If we were to reduce police officers, especially detectives, what would, what are your thoughts about our ability to modernize, continue to modernize, and be able to defend our citizens against cybercrime?
Well, it's interesting, we were, Captain Gandy and I were having a conversation earlier today, police work generally can be divided into two types of work. One is reactive, and one is proactive. So reactive means that you respond to a call that either occurs in front of you, or that you're dispatched to. It's already happened, you're reacting to it. Proactive is precisely the kinds of things that you're talking about. We try to get ahead of those potential concerns for citizens that would endanger them. You're right about cybercrime. As recently as perhaps, I think it was about ten days ago, I personally took a phone call from a senior in our community, who at that very moment was responding to a cybercriminal event that was coming to his home. Let me be specific. He got one of these, what they call the grandpa scam, or the grandma scam, where an email is sent, telling that, or a phone call is made, telling that individual that their grandson or granddaughter has been arrested. And if they don't post the bail, there's going to be nothing that can be done, and they're going to be, I don't know what's, what the next step is, but they put fear in the heart of this person who may not really know, and it happens very quickly. As I'm speaking to this individual, I asked some questions. One of the questions was, now, when is this going to happen? He said, well, he's on his way over here right now. I literally walked down, had detectives respond, and in flagrante delecto, that wonderful Latin phrase, red-handed, in the act, arrested right then and there. We are very proactive in getting ahead of these type of things by using our social media platforms, by going out to citizen communities, senior communities. That'll be inhibited, if not stopped, if we have less people, that's just the reality. Police work is people.
Joe?
Yeah, just a simple question here, it's, so I think what I'm getting from what you said, Chief, that the two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar cut is not going to affect services, because it's people that would have been coming into the, into the department, not people that are currently there.
It's, you're, I hate to be so direct, but I'm going to be very direct.
Please.
You're incorrect.
Okay.
You're wrong.
Okay.
It will inhibit that. We try to get very, very clear, I need to step back, we need, we try to get very, very close to full hiring, keeping in mind the facts that Kevin brought up earlier, that we're going to have to overspend on some. But if we're not able to get close, we're going to be delivering less services. This is a growing community, less police officers, less service, that's the equation you can make.
I guess I don't understand the comment that you made with the, to the Budget Committee, then, so.
What comment was that?
No, I just, well, I'm just trying to clarify. So the two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars will affect current services right now, because there's people that, I just, before I make a decision, I want to make a decision that, I don't want, you know, people to be laid off, I thought the conversation was, is that this was based on people that were coming aboard, based on positions that weren't being filled yet.
If you cut those two positions, there won't be layoffs.
Okay.
But there'll be less police officers. So we'll have to inhibit the kinds of things we do in deploying that resource to the community. And let's be clear about the numbers, right now, it's not going to change, this discussion we're having is not going to change anything. When it will occur is about eighteen to twenty months from now, when we spend that last dollar, after the community has continued to grow, after we continue to take the type of traffic calls that we take, and they increase by the same kinds of numbers.
Okay, because, because before, I think people got a different impression by the question and answering, so I'm glad that you said that, and I'm glad I asked the question, because if everybody out there, if we do cut this, it's going to affect us in the future.
No question about it.
So I'm glad that I asked the question, thank you.
I am too.
Joe, if I could just add to that, too, again, just keep in mind, if you're looking at the sheet, the table I handed out, that lists the non-personnel expenses and the personnel expenses, annually, the police department is significantly over in their non-personnel expenses by hundreds of thousands of dollars. And again, that's due to the fact that the non-expense lines haven't, have stayed static roughly for ten years. And so the only way to balance their budget is through keeping some positions open throughout the fiscal year, so that they're not going over budget. And I just think it's important to point that out, because that's roughly how the budget is managed right now, and has been for some time.
Yeah, it's, yeah, line twenty dash eleven, four, one, one, zero, I get it, that's where the number's coming from, I get it.
Okay. Chief, one other item, and the only reason I bring this up is because, you know, in my view, there was a mistake in the community fifteen years ago, when they started eliminating SROs. Over the last eight years, we've, we've increased the SROs through the ballot to four. I don't think there's any appetite in the community to reduce SROs, you haven't heard anything, have you?
No, I haven't.
Has anyone here, SROs?
No.
Yeah, because, well, technically, we may not have to go back to the voters, I don't believe we, I would be able to reduce an SRO in good conscience without going back to the voters, but I don't see the need.
Well, if I might, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, I think four is the optimal number for a community like Londonderry, but what, what, people have to make tough decisions when you're talking about budget cuts. Let me be absolutely clear, if we're going to make these cuts, everything will be on the table. And this falls into the purview of the person who manages the law enforcement response in the community. And while I agree with you, while I worked hard, like you did, and like many people at this table did, to make sure that those schools were well-protected, that they were safe, and that we were, we are ready for anything that might happen, we're going to have to take a hard look at policing. I don't want to do it, but that's what we will do.
I don't think we disagree, Chief, I just know what the history was, and I'm not agreeing with the history. And I know you, it's a bottom-line budget, you make the decision.
Captain Gandy is ready to answer any questions about the airport, if anybody has those type of questions, growth and expansion, and the flux back and forth.
No, I believe the airport director has been, the new airport director's been great, he's been very frank and very open about things, and I think recently, I know I spent some time up there with the, with the fire chief and some of the first responders at one of the more recent political events, in which we stayed away from the crowd, but we spent a lot of time with the airport personnel, and the very positive feedback on everything that they're, from them, and, and how the operations are running up there, I mean, it's all very positive, at least that's what I heard.
That's what I heard as well, yeah.
Anybody questions?
I just want to make a comment, I, when I, when I observe what's happened across the country, especially with some of our school kids, and the terror that they have had to deal with, and I drive down Mammoth Road, and I see the police station, the size of it, and I look across the street, and I see the police cars parked in the school parking lot, and, or the SRO walking around the school, in the school, I see that as a major deterrent to anything like that happening in Londonderry, and I think that's important to maintain in our community, and I know, I would, when you mentioned, Chief, about, in some cases, police work is reactive, and never want, never want to have to react to a school terror situation, and I think the, being out front and trying to mitigate that in advance, I think is so important to the community, so I, it's going to be my position not to make these cuts to the police department at this point.
Jim?
Chief, real quick. School goes completely remote. What happens with the SROs, are they resigned, or are they staying with the buildings?
Where, what's happening right now is they're going to a modified remote system, the vast majority of the students are going to do remote learning, so a small population has, of staff, teachers, and students are staying in the school buildings themselves, so we're rotating the two SROs out into a day shift and an afternoon shift, and then two are going to be in the buildings, obviously, because of the proximity that Councilor Dolan represents, where we train to that response time. And my understanding is, and Captain Bernard is really more on top of it than I am, is most of that population base for the school is going to be in the middle school and the high school, so very proximate for us.
Anything further? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Department twenty-three, fire.
Come on up, Chief O'Brien.
Mr. Chair?
Yes? Hi.
Um, I just have Christine on the phone, and she actually just has a quick question about the cemetery, can we, can I just ask that for her?
Of course, although Steve has left, but feel free.
Do you want to wait until the thirtieth?
Go ahead, and if I'm not able to answer it, then we'll wait till the thirtieth.
Okay, so she was just asking about the fall and spring cleanup, and if we do both, can we reduce it to either or?
We'll have to wait till the thirtieth for Steve on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, Chief, you're up.
So just as an introduction here, there, the two main areas where the reductions are coming out of the fire department are in personnel hirings, and also department expense and supplies, an area which they're traditionally over-expended, but it was to try to get to two and a half percent, or as close as possible. Floor is yours, Chief.
Okay, so over the, over the last probably sixteen months or so, we've had people that have retired from, from service, we have two more retiring here, or leaving service within the next couple of months. With the whole COVID pandemic that came up, Lisa can tell you, you know, the hiring process has been a challenge. We currently have, I believe, three vacant positions in firefighters, vacant positions meaning that they just have not been filled yet. Our, our process is, you know, similar to the police department, when we, when we have a group of candidates that go through the process, you know, the ratio is maybe one out of three make it through it, and we've just been, you know, lagging behind on that, so this, this budget cut here will be those vacant positions, I can't say open positions or new positions, there'll be those vacant positions that I'm currently striving to fill. Again, with all this, you know, the grant that we got in two thousand and seventeen, the SAFER grant, part of that SAFER grant stipulation was, we needed to maintain forty-eight line personnel. By not filling these positions, we are, we are going against that grant's guidelines, and what that can cause in future, in future days, we will never get another SAFER grant, for sure, but it will also inhibit us to, you know, get some of the other grants that we, you know, that we seek during, during the fiscal year. I mean, the fire department's received probably over, you know, a million and a half dollars over the last two or three years in grants, and doing something like this, or not accepting the stipulations of the grant, and not meeting the guidelines of the grant, plus, we'd have to pay back that two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we've already used as a portion of that grant, we'd have to pay that back to the grant services, so.
As well as, as well as remove about a hundred and thirteen thousand from revenue.
Yeah, so the money we may have to pay back is a little over two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and as Justin noted, we'd lose about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in revenue.
Yes, Tom? Mr. Manager, is that, is that something we, we ought to co-locate on the spreadsheet as a potential expense? If, I mean, if we cut the firefighter headcount, and then have a corresponding expense to pay a couple hundred thousand dollars back to the, to the, for the grant, shouldn't we budget for that?
Well, that's, that's why I'm mentioning it here, you know, as part of this reduction, it would potentially have that ancillary cost to it.
Do we need to get a legal position on that?
I actually think you have a larger problem, I don't think it qualifies for default. So, I mean, if we go there, we certainly can get a position on it, but I think that the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars wouldn't qualify under default, so we would, not only would we have to find the two hundred and eighty-eight, we'd also have to cut deeper. But if we go there, we'll, I mean, we can get an illegal opinion.
So that one's going to require a lot more thought, I think, than...
Well, I think the thoughts are pretty straightforward, myself, but that's just me.
And just to clarify, the department expense, the twenty thousand dollar reduction there, that's actually the fireworks line for Old Home Day.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, Anna? Yeah, so the NFPA seventeen-ten standard is four, four individuals per frontline apparatus, so the, the first, first-in-line fire pump, rescue, ladder company, seventeen-ten requires you to have four people on each piece of apparatus. For us, for us, that's about seventeen people per shift. We're at, we're currently staffing right now, due to the pandemic, we're staffing at twelve, and don't get me wrong, you know, I, I thank the citizens for their support throughout these past few years. We picked up not only four with the citizens petition, you know, back a few years ago, we picked up the four with the SAFER grant, so that's, right now, our, our manning is at eleven per shift, and I'm hiring that extra body right now on overtime, you know, again, hoping for the FEMA reimbursement at the end of it, but that allows me to run that first-run ambulance out of Central, to limit the exposure to the other individuals on shift, so we should be at seventeen per shift.
If we reduce the numbers, that would definitely affect the qualified people for the ambulance?
Yeah, our EMS calls are, like I said, they're probably over sixty-five, seventy percent of the call volume that we currently do. Paramedics are far between in between right now, I mean, when they, when they appear on the list, they're, they're sucked up pretty quick from, from other departments, and then if I find a paramedic, they don't necessarily have the fire certs. Now with the Fire Academy, you know, pretty much closed down, remote learning, I can't hire that individual and send them to the academy to get the proper fire training that they need to be able to, you know, cross-staff different vehicles within the department, so, yeah, it's challenging, to say the least.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Joe?
I guess I didn't really hear the question, so I apologize if it's going to be repetitive, but it's similar to the question I asked the police chief that was here. Are these, are these cuts that you're proposing going to hurt us in the future? I'm going to, I'm going to ask the right question this time, they're going to, they're going to hurt us in the future to, to affect personnel. So in other words, the same question I had for the chief of police, that I know it may not affect services today, but it's going to affect services later on, which are growing, people, you know, people are coming into the community, things are happening, and we need to be able to plan for that, so how will this affect that piece?
Yeah, well, it will absolutely affect services going forward, I mean, again, as just mentioned, and with Councilor Butler, I mean, we're still, according to the NFP standard, we're still five people below the threshold where we should be for a department our size, for a community this size, for our call volume, we're still five people below that. With the new assisted living facility coming in down to Woodmont Commons, that's going to be a tax on services that you're not going to imagine. When Button Drive came, came into town, we were there two... When Button Drive came, came into town, we were there two or three times a day. And that, that was consistent all through time until the pandemic started. And then they changed their protocols with inside the building and that call volume has gone down a little bit. But these assisted living facilities, you know, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, they shouldn't, they should make a carport down there for us because we're gonna be down there that many times.
One more?
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so the other one is, that I had was, you know, if you, if you're looking at, hopefully, COVID-19 reimbursement, maybe this is really, not for you, but maybe for somebody else, that, how, how would that go in? I mean, right now, we're looking at it and we're saying, okay, this is, this is where the actuals are, there's a lot of dollars in the overtime, obviously, in both departments. But I mean, how would that go in to balance that budget? I mean, is there gonna be enough for a different line item or reimbursement?
So every, I mean, like I mentioned in the last meeting, so we've gone, we've gotten one, one grant thus far that has paid for some of the overtime from January 20th up through May. And every indications that I've been getting from all my state representatives and everybody up at Homeland Security, that FEMA will make the reimbursement for, you know, from May to whenever they're gonna cut this off. You know, there's, there's talks somewhere around January 15th. I foresee it going longer than that. I have greatest expectations that we will get these monies back for, for the overtime funds that I've been spending.
Yeah, cuz that's, you know, obviously, you're not budgeting anywhere near that number cuz it's, you know, I was like going, wow, that's, that's a huge number, okay. And the last one, last question I had was, we talked on Saturday about you being able to possibly do some more calls and for different towns. That may offset some of this expense as well. Nothing, anything in the works at all, or is it more a year away or two?
No, I, we're currently proposing a contract to the town of Candia. We've been in talks with the town of Merrimack. And there's a couple other communities within our area that I know have, have looked into our services that I'd rather kinda keep hush-hush right now. But, you know, I think, I think we have great opportunities ahead of us. And again, once we get there, I think we have the infrastructure now and the, and the equipment to support that. But what we're gonna see is probably the more part-time personnel to, you know, put that double coverage in there 24 hours a day. Right now, I'm, I'm just relying on one person in there 24 hours a day. We're down a position in dispatch for the supervised position, which I was having double coverage during our, what I call busiest hours and busiest days of the week. So I think going forward, I mean, Candy is a smaller community, the call volume is a little bit less, so I don't see the taxing, taxing on services that extreme from that. But some of these other communities that have the same amount of call volume that we currently have, you know, will do that.
Well, you see what I was looking for. I was looking for, you know, the hidden gem there, saying that, you know, maybe we can offset some of these dollars with that revenue, but it sounds like it's gonna be a net, not equal, right?
Um, not necessarily. I think with some of these communities, some of these larger communities that we have potential, you know, picking up their services for, you know, if we hire part-time personnel, we don't have to pay the benefits and, and things like that. I think the town has a potential to make substantial funds with doing so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Jonathan? Please just help me understand the, the numbers here, if I'm looking at the right ones. If we reduce regular salaries by what looks like $104,000, that doesn't sound like three positions to me.
I think he's looking at the finance director.
Yes, give me one minute, I'm just trying to find out what you're talking.
Should be one.
Yep, so that is strictly the salaries. If you look below, you'll see there are additional aspects on that as well. The open positions we currently are budgeting for, let me just flip to...
Yeah, so you're talking retirement and all the others that go into it, holiday salaries, Medicare, that all goes into the number, right?
That all goes into the number and the retirement is a pretty good amount. And, sorry, I just have to find my little cheat sheet here. There it is.
Yeah, if you all recall from our joint meeting with the school board, the retirement system was in, said they were only 61% funded. And what did they say they were short? Nine billion?
A lot.
Yeah, something like nine billion.
Yeah.
So I, I would suspect that our participation, all towns' participation is going to increase around the retirement system.
I think he said about 15 years before they dig out of that hole.
I, I think they need to go, hire Peter Lynch from Fidelity and go figure that out.
I have a question for the chief.
So, were you saying that's three, it's only two positions?
I thought I heard the chief say three.
No, I currently have three positions that are open that have not been filled. Well, I say it, there's gonna be three. There's gonna be, like I said, two leaving within the next couple of months and I currently have one now. It's just the, it's been the process of trying to hire, trying to get, you know, candidates in, trying to do the interviewing process. Just haven't gotten there yet.
So just help me, when, when all is said and done, retirements, filling open positions, how many slots will this budget reduction cost us, I'll, I'll ask?
Two.
Two, okay. Wasn't following the math, but I get it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom?
Chief, when we take over a dispatch for another community and someone from that community calls 911, which goes to the state, how does the state know to call you?
Because we're, we're identified right now as a regional dispatch center for, because we dispatch for more than one community. So they have a process up there that we get Pelham calls, Hampstead calls, Londonary calls, and they have, they have it in their queue up there for street addresses because a lot of the communities have the same names of streets, so they have distinctions on how to highlight those as well.
Good, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything further from Chief O'Brien?
Okay.
Oh, Kevin, you had something?
Yeah, just two quick...
Sorry, Steve, I'll come to you.
Two quick things. One is, Joe, just on the reimbursement issue, just be careful because not every reimbursement counts against the expense. So the reimbursement may come into the revenue line, doesn't mean we can then spend any of that, you know, those reimbursement dollars, not like, because the, the two sides of the ledger are completely separate. So I don't want anyone to think because we get reimbursement money, we can spend anything above what the appropriation is. So that's one thing just to keep in mind. The other thing is, and this is more for the budget committee, as these councilors have all been here since I was hired, when we first started doing the fire department budget, Darren knows, it was, it was coming in over budget by a lot every year. And Darren made it a commitment that he was gonna get that department budget under control. And he did so, but it wasn't easy. And, and for a few years, it was done through dropping down in personnel to make sure that we're meeting our budget numbers at the end of the year. But as we've gone up in hires and, and got to eight additional personnel, he's been able to do it through, much the way the police department does, through delays in personnel hirings. Because again, those expense lines have gone up for equipment, training, whatever, over the years, but have stayed stagnant. And so as those lines continue to go up, he's, he's had to manage it as other departments have through, again, delays in, in personnel hirings. But I give a lot of compliments to the chief in that, I, I don't remember the last year he came in over budget, but it, it hasn't been recently and certainly appreciate that on the town side.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Steve?
Hey, Chief O'Brien, just a quick question. When you mentioned about the grants, about the headcount, you said that 48 you needed, what, what's considered headcount? I mean, is it a full-time person or, and in what way can we get around that, I guess? And what I mean by that is, in the business world, if I need a resource, I can get, I can go hire a consultant. What are the options for the fire department to bring somebody on? Temporary, six months, eight months? Is that possible?
So the 48, that's the operational line personnel, so firefighters and paramedics and battalion chiefs. Administrative staff, I don't have a lot. It's myself, my operations chief, my administrative assistant and the fire prevention officer, there's four of us. All the rest is operational line staff personnel. And that 48 number represents what we needed to basically meet the, meet the objectives of through this grant. We're at a level of 44 line personnel, bringing those four people on would bring, increase that number. So what, what we were trying to do is meet a NFPA standard, that we'd have so many people on scene between our department and calling in resources from other communities, we'd have so many people on the initial scene that would meet that NFPA standard. If we don't do that with these, with the 48 personnel as outlined by the grant, we wouldn't be meeting that standard.
Yeah, it's just more a definition of personnel. How is that funding?
So the grant states they need to be full-time.
Full-time, okay.
So, all right, so Chief, let's see if we can, we can bring this home. When I joined the council, we were running eight to nine on a shift, right?
Correct.
In 2010. I don't know if I'm explaining this right, but we used to run a lot of engines with dead man pump.
Correct.
Why don't you tell people what that means? We don't do that anymore.
We do not do that anymore. So what he refers to as a dead man pump is, that's when we were running two, two individuals on a piece of apparatus. So if a fire engine rolled in and they were first to a building fire or anything like that, both guys would hop off of that apparatus, grab the hose line, put the truck and pump and rely on its resources and go into, go inside the building. So what that, what that puts for me as a department head is, you know, the trucks are not like, I mean, I mentioned this the last meeting, the trucks are not like they used to be, all mechanical. Now they're all computerized. Everything is a computer, everything is Selenoids and everything like that. So do they have failures? They have failures often. So by doing that, we don't do it no more. It's three people, so the, the NFPA, NFPA 17 standard is, is like I said, four people on a piece of apparatus, that's two in, two out, plus the, plus the on-scene incident commander. That incident commander never goes in the building, he's constantly either in one spot or he's a operational person that, you know, just basically does a 360 at the scene, always looking at safety precautions. So I hope that answers your question.
I wanna make sure that everyone here understands what happens when we, when we go, right, so we, we don't have a lot of fires anymore, but we still have our, our fair share. When, when we dispatch the full battalion on-call and mutual aid, just so, I just want everybody to understand what happens when that, when that happens. Because there's a whole system behind it and why we have to run with a certain number of people on a piece of apparatus, because sometimes we have to provide mutual aid and we can't show up in another community with just two people on a piece of apparatus.
Great, and that's what, and that's what I pride Londonary on, is all my personnel that work, work in the department are all cross-staffed. So they can, they can go out on an ambulance, you know, on this call and they're coming back and next thing, you know, they're taking out the rescue for a vehicle extrication call. They'll come back, they'll go through a line activation on the ladder truck. So all of our personnel, I would put them against any city personnel any, any day because they're so well-trained in every aspect of the job. They're, they're trained in every piece of apparatus, they're, they're not specific to the engine company and they're not specific to the ambulance. And what we do and what you, what you see happen often is when, excuse me, when we have a large incident like that, all of, all three stations will go. So that's my 10, 11 guys that will go to that scene. And that's where you see in my statistics on the number of simultaneous calls that come up, is because once everybody is at that scene, you know, there's two or three more calls that come in that we're relying on mutual aid from outside resources. Our average right now is about a dozen calls a day. And that's, you know, again, that's ambulances, that's engine companies, that's rescue companies. That's what we're averaging right now.
Thank you. Yes, Paul?
Hey, Chief, are we in violation of NFPA now because we don't have those positions filled? Or so long as we keep them open, they're considered, I guess, adhering to the NFPA in terms of, of a position that's still within the force?
Yeah, I can't say we're, we're not in violation of anything. We would be, if we didn't hire these personnel and get up to that 48 standard, we would, we would not be meeting the requirements of the grant. NFPA standard is just a standard.
That's what I meant. There's a lot of... In terms of the grant, I guess...
Right, there's a lot of departments in the area that don't meet that standard, you know, as of right now, but we're on the road to getting there.
So, but we, we need to fill those positions to be able to continue to maintain the grant?
To meet the terms of the grant, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Okay. So just one last piece on the, the overtime. So the overtime is 128 right now and it looks like, just for clarification purposes, somebody would say, well, how is that, you know, apply to COVID? So when, when something happens with COVID, not only is the ambulance moving, but also all the apparatus is moving too, right?
Correct.
Because I, I think that, some people don't know that all the time and it's like, okay, well, how'd that, you know, because the ambulance is obviously with insurance, you know, insurance pays back the ambulance. And I know what the town manager said, that you have to look at the expense lines differently than the reimbursement lines. But in my mind, you know, it's one, one, out of one pocket into the other pocket. I try to like, I try to see that literally. And, but in this particular case, it's not just the ambulance, it's, it's all the other apparatus and all the other personnel.
It's basically right now is to keep, so I say keep my staffing at a level of 12. That 12 could be, yeah, I'll have the two people on the ambulance here, but somebody is out at the north end or the south end, it's filling that person, I'm putting that person in as COVID overtime, just to man that ambulance as a two, a two-person company.
Okay, thank you, that's good, good clarification, thank you.
Anything further for the chief?
Well, I just wanna comment there, governmental standards, we're not allowed to offset an expense with a revenue.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
But in the, okay, can I just ask a question on that one?
Yes.
But in the real world, don't we do that? I mean, don't you have a pocket where you have to spend money on? I mean, in a government, we, we would have to take it out of some, some pocket to spend it. I understand on the financial end of it, but when I'm, I'm using logic, I'm just thinking about the person that's, you know, paying their taxes and the, the person that's at home thinking about how, how that works, that's all. I mean, I understand this, it's a different, different place that you have to bring it from, but...
So if we cut the appropriation, the revenue we get in doesn't go against that appropriation? That appropriation's gone.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Building, Department 24.
So in the building department lines, you'll see the reductions were primarily in the overtime salary. And then you had the FICA Medicare and retirement benefits that go along with that. There was a small decrease, they don't have a very large management, management services line to begin with, but there was a decrease in that of $2,000. And then almost $5,000, the mosquito control services. The way Richard described this to me prior to his leaving is that right now, we budget for essentially two mosquito sprays per year. The first one is fairly necessary, the second one is more of a if needed. Some years it's been needed and some years it hasn't. So with the reduction there, we can probably, we will have at least the one spray, but we may not be able to do a second spray.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Kevin, is this a, represent a change in, in the ledger? Moving building under public safety?
Building has always been considered public safety.
Okay, in our, in our management scheme, are we gonna manage it differently or is, or...
So, no, it's, it's the same as it always is. If you look at some of the DRA forms, you'll see that they are under public safety.
Okay, thank you. Department 26, Public Works.
This is the Public Works Department, asked Janosch to come to the microphone and he'll be speaking about reductions here in what you'll see are gasoline supplies, street lighting services, roadway maintenance, waste collection and recycling. Janosch?
The cuts that the town manager's proposing are consistent with, with the options that I submitted to Justin, you know, a couple weeks or three weeks ago and presented on last Saturday. Street lights, we budgeted $40,000 because we changed to LED lights, we could cut $14,000 and then we will not see, you know, a problem with this line reducing deadline. Fuel, we have $90,000. Lately, fuel costs went down, so prices, right now we are spending around $50,000, $60,000 for fuel. And again, that varies from year to year, depends, you know, on the storms and, and how much fuel we will use. Roadway maintenance, we had $864,000, that's... Roadway maintenance, we had $864,000, that's like $260,000 over the $600,000 that we are getting from the state block grant, and that's reducing deadline by $70,000 or close to $70,000 will give me that two and a half percent. See, we, in your book, it's written as a two departments, but solid waste and it's under Public Works as a division, so it's not a separate department. So, I'm looking, but also two and a half percent from the waste management, waste collection and recycling. It's mostly for the surcharge that we budget for fuel cost. And if fuel doesn't go up, we will be all set, especially in recycling. We reduce on waste and garbage collection, we reduce the tonnage a little bit in our estimate, thinking that we should be still in a, in a estimate, looking at the previous year's tonnage. So, this is, this is what we have for the cuts. I just wanted to stress that what Kevin already pointed out several times, that these items, even they look that they are not spent, they are spent, they are spent on the items that they are under budgeted. Over the several years running default budget, vendors don't care that we run the fine budget, the default budget. They have to, they charge us for tires and equipment as much as, you know, the market calls for. So, if you look, the maintenance supply line, consistently, we are over year after year. Last year, we were $75,000 over. Year before, $40,000 over. Year before, almost $30,000 over. Year before, $37,000 over. Then 2016, $22,000 over. So, this is not something that we can ignore, and if we didn't spend on fuel, I was able to, at a bottom-line budget, I was able to cover those maintenance supplies, but we can't, we can't stop repairing. If we stop repairing, might as well cut the fuel budget even more, because we will, don't need, we will not run equipment. So, that's something that we should be very careful about reducing those lines. So, I think, but these are, these are consistent, what I, what I pointed out.
Yeah, they are, and if, and if I could just add to that, so in the roadway maintenance services reduction, that just means less money for paving.
For road maintenance. And then hopefully, yeah, hopefully that article will pass for $650,000, then it will give us some money, you know.
And the waste and the recycling, that's, as Janos said, that's based on, you know, where, where we've seen the tonnage historically becoming in at, but would just point out that if, if waste or recycling, if the tonnage, cost per tonnage goes up, it's not like we cannot pick up the trash, so we'd have to find that money elsewhere if it's not budgeted at the correct amount.
Questions?
Nice job, nice job, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't think anybody can complain about $180 a household for solid waste and recycling. General Assistance, Department 28.
Yeah, so that's the one line I talked about, that's our welfare line where we contract through.
Yep, got it.
CHS, that we did not touch.
All right. Department 29, Cable.
Yeah, so these are, these reductions are in the way of equipment. This line has historically lately been running under expended, mostly because the franchise fee that Comcast pays us has paid for a lot of the equipment that we get at the cable studio. And so, that's why you see the reduction in this line, so there's two lines there, one is for the equipment itself, and the other is for, usually we have to hire a specialist to help us come and install the equipment. So, that's what those reductions are.
Okay, any questions? Recreation, Department 30.
Sure. Art, come on down.
Door number one, two, or three?
So, you'll see in the recreation line, there were reductions to part-time salaries, and there's a FICA Medicare that goes along with it, machinery and equipment, and then some reductions to the adult program as well as the summer programs. The floor is yours, Mr. Salitis.
Personally, I would not like to see any money come out of the part-time salaries, I'd rather find it someplace else. The entire rec department is made up of part-timers, no benefits. Some of the guys work two, three hours a day, and what will happen if we cut that, go up to the Laffer Fields and Nelson Road area, and we have somebody up there that takes care of the policing the area and moving the garbage cans around, that kind of stuff, it's going to get awful filthy. Just a reminder, if you've been around for a long time, we've been cutting our own grass since, I think, '06. When West Road opened up, we were paying $65,000 a year or so to cut the grass, and we've been doing it ourselves, so if I, being, being a politician, I would say, we saved you guys $3 million. That's not true, but that's okay. Politicians cannot always tell the truth. So, I would rather take the money out of our, like, our, our equipment, not, out of equipment, out of general supplies, rather than losing somebody, because if somebody's working three hours a day, 15 hours a week, you say, now you cut down to two hours a And it's not, we don't offer a great package of benefits to work hard time for recreation, so if that's okay, then I'm fine with the cut, but I would really hate to see anybody lose their 15 hours a week or 10 hours a week that they're working picking up garbage and cutting grass.
Anyone, any questions on recreation? No questions for now, Art? Thank you. Okay, library, so we have a letter from the library director, the, to repeat again, the library trustees, the chairman, Betsy McKinney approached me about, with all the protocols they have over at the library, if the library director could be excused from this meeting, and I agreed. So, you have a, you have a letter from her, right?
I do, and just to summarize the letter, it basically wanted to inform the council and the Budget Committee that this current fiscal year, the one we're currently in, the library took the proactive move of laying off a full-time and part-time employee at the library. Their reduction that is listed here for a little bit over $32,000 for fiscal year '22 is a salary reduction of a full-time employee. The, the salary is currently in the $60,000 range, and it would be reduced to somewhere in the $30,000 range.
So, can we, can we please forward that letter out to the rest of the council and to the Budget Committee?
Sure.
Barbara did a really nice job on it, and she really gets into the details as Barbara does, and, and I really appreciate Betsy taking a lead position here with the trustees and, and working with us on this. Any questions on the library? Senior Affairs.
Last but not least, you'll notice the senior affairs reduction is in a part-time position. This grew of the monies that were originally appropriated for the senior transportation. If you recall, there was a Warren article some years ago to have a transportation service, which was going to cost us a lot more than what the Warren article was for, but recently, this, these monies have been used for a part-time salary for a senior transportation coordinator position, which had worked part-time. They currently had, obviously not been working through the pandemic, and so that is what this reduction is on here for.
Any questions on the senior center? Okay, seeing none. All right, debt service, okay. Are there any more questions before I move to summarize? All right, council, looking for consensus here. One thing we, I asked for on behalf of the council is, Department 15, getting to a more detailed review around Department 15 and what that $561,736 actually, you know, what's, what's in the, the devil's in the details there, let's see what that's all about. One of these things that are proposed here around reductions, things we can live out, live without, Old Home Day, fireworks, Morrison House, Heritage Commission, Cultural Affairs and Art Center, CHS, healthy Lendary contract. While I can see a reduction in numbers, I don't believe in cutting the soul out of the community, and that would cut the soul out of the community. Is anybody really okay with that? We just leave those and see where we go with those? No, no decisions tonight, just kind of, but I feel that you don't, those are all things people look forward to here in the community, and you just can't cut the soul of the community. What I would like to see is, and if the council agrees, is for Monday, the 30th, we do have the follow-up on the personnel, I would like to see options for $50,000, $100,000, $150,000, and a $200,000 budgets below default. And what does that mean? It's a bottom-line budget, guys, go tell us what you, where, where you think you can get that money from. 50, 100, 150, and 200. That will, you know, the personnel thing, we can come back and revisit it a number of times if we decide to go in that direction, but at a minimum, the, what I just stated. Does that sound okay?
I, I don't understand, I'm sorry, maybe I'm a little slow tonight, tired.
So, what I'm saying, Joe, is.
So, we went from a $959,000 reduction to 200, is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is, is step one, this is step one. If I, if I, you know, if I move our personnel, that's, that's about 450,000 or half of this, this whole thing. What I'm saying is, step one, let me see what 50 below default looks like, 100 below default looks like, 150 below default looks like, and 200 below default. I'm not saying that's where we land, but let's start the conversation there and see what that means.
And, and my math was just a little different, it's all, just, just, just to serve this out there, and if you take the 450 away from the 9, the 950, that's, that's at 500, so maybe you, you know, to, I, I agree with you, I mean, the personnel piece is the biggest thing in my heart right now, I mean, so, you know, I'm, I'm almost like thinking, the way Council Dolan said, let's not even look, look to that, you know what I mean? So, if you take those out, you're still at, you know, almost 500, so.
Yeah, and again, I, I want to have a much more detailed conversation, but here's, here's what scares me. What scares me is, what if I don't have, what, what, what if I don't have the $55,780 to cover solid waste? Now, now I'm at 550. What if I, you know, what, what does this 103 actually mean inside of, inside of the Public Works number? This $220,000 in insurance, is that real? You know, I mean, I, I look at these things, and I sit there and I say to myself going, now, if I have, if I have a criteria to work within, 50, 100, 150, 200, show me what that means. If I can, and if I'm going to go to 400, now, now, now I got to make some hard decisions, but let me set myself up with the easy decisions first. That's sort of where I'm going, if that makes sense.
And I, I'm fine with it, I just probably think that, you know, maybe we can start at the higher number and go down.
We're, we're far from done, Joe.
Yep.
We don't have to have a budget until the, you know, until, you know, another few weeks.
I get it.
Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that, that I would like, and I don't know if it, whatever fits into the calendar that you're envisioning, when I look at the firefighters, I'm looking at a $167,000 cut that's going to cost us a $200,000 expense. That, that kind of magic doesn't work in my head, so.
And those, and those are the things we need to further explain to the community. I agree with you, it's a $288,000 cut plus $112,000, I think it was.
And, and the other one is the cuts in police. So, I guess my thought would be if we would ask both chiefs what their department cuts would look like if we said no cuts in headcount.
So, all right, so we're on the same page. I'm hoping to achieve that by giving direction to the town manager of a bottom-line budget of these numbers, and go figure out how you're going to run your business.
Okay. Like I said, if it, if you're going to get to that point in the, in the, on the calendar, I, I can wait.
Yeah, and what I'm asking for is for November 30th, have that first run for us.
Yep.
So, we can see what that means.
I'm good. Thank you.
Budget Committee, you okay with that?
Makes sense.
You guys okay with that?
Yep.
All right, we're still going to do these community services grants tonight with the Budget Committee, but I want to be able to get the staff out of here. So, do you all understand? You good? Okay, so this is a workshop, you guys are free to, free to go and start thinking about those things, and we'll get into the community services grant with the Budget Committee, and, and Jen, it looks like you're presenting it. So, if you want to give them a minute to get out of the room, just, and we'll, we'll get rolling. Unless you guys, if anybody needs a break, please feel free to take it, but I'd like to keep moving so we can move through this. Okay, then Jen, it's all yours.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to kick it off.
Pardon me?
I'm going to kick it off.
You're going to kick it off? I just, I just, it looks like I'm losing people here. You're coming back, all right, Steve?
Okay, thank you. So, in front of you, you had the slide deck, and there are actually, there are five critical slides in the slide deck, and there's an appendix with some other information, I'm not sure if I have to get into that detail, but the, the first five slides is what we're going to focus on. This information was actually, I believe Deb Paul put this in the Lendary Times, it was an article in there about the Budget Committee, about the community services grant. So, we're outlining the whole process and what's taken place. So, on, on slide number, slide number one, the overview, just, I've been on the Budget Committee for two years now. Last year was a completely different process for this allocation process for the community service grants. Last year was, we had a number of organizations coming in, delivering presentations, I can't tell you the amount of paperwork that was placed in front of us, the slide decks, the additional information, packets of information, a lot to read through and make decisions. And the main thing was that it just was not consistent. So, what I'm pointing out here on this overview is that this year, we have been very consistent with our process, and we've streamlined the process. It only took us a half an hour to make decisions. So, it was an amazing work from the Budget Committee and what we did and pulled this together, and I'm hoping what Jen goes through after for the allocations, that the town council hopefully agrees with our allocation approach. So, again, overview, we've, basically it's an online process, we've taken all the paperwork, did it online, were able to compile all that information to a single spreadsheet so that every single Budget Committee member could look at this information and look at and analyze it consistently. And then we came back to the group and said, this is what we all think. Each individual member came back and said, this is what, how I think it should get allocated, and then we pulled some averages. So, the overview, just standardizing the process, streamlining the process. On the next slide, that's the application process. So, basically, the, the finance committee, what we did is we had, had an online system that they could go in for an application, put in their, the details in there for each organization. They, we pulled all that together, looked at the, the information each of those, from those organizations, very little paperwork, and then on the 22nd of October is when we met as a Budget Committee to review the results. We had a few, just very minor changes to our allocations, and, and then we agreed on the final approach. So, basically, the way it worked was that all the information put together, every single Budget Committee member would put together their recommendations, we took an average of all that information, and then we allocated based on that average. So, every person's input was a factor in this allocation process. On the next slide, this one's titled nonprofit applicants and requested amount. So, this is what they came in requesting for an amount, overall, just over $80,000. And Jen is going to focus on the next few slides. Jen?
Okay. So, on the next couple of slides, by organization name, we have, the first column is what we recommended based upon our averages, and then we did it without Girl Scouts, their project. They're. Their project, all but one board member, myself, did not feel like their project was-
Community-based.
Community-based.
Yeah.
So they withdrew their allocations and I left mine simply because they're the only nonprofit that serves a hundred percent of Londonderry's residents. And I just felt that what they were doing, they're actually providing, you know, back to our community by building picnic tables and they presented that, I think, to the school board beginning of November about what they were trying to raise funds for. So I left mine. And then on the last slide, we did a two percent budget cut because we felt that you were asking the town to cut their budget. I just wanted to show you guys with the two percent budget cut and then without the Girl Scouts with the two percent budget cut, what that would look like.
So basically in front of you, that, the recommendation that Jen just covered, a two percent cut, I'm not sure if that is going to apply this to the community services grant or not. But this is the allocation that came through. The other, you know, the, the Girl Scouts was, there was some discussion about it regarding, is it really a community service-based? Where community services, the whole point of this allocation for this grant is that it saves the residents of Londonderry money because there are other, these services should provide those additional services that community members would have to pay for. So we're not sure how the Girl Scouts, you know, came into play here, if that would apply into this situation. That's why we're looking to the town council to provide some guidance here and see if there's an agreement that if they should be part of this allocation or if they should not be part of this allocation.
Is this an individual troop looking for funds?
Yes.
It's the Londonderry troop.
So it's not the Girl Scouts of America?
No.
Well, they fall under that umbrella.
Justin, can we check and see if they actually qualify on, it's, Girl Scouts of America is a 501(c)(1), right?
So I actually have their registration in an email, I can send that to you.
Yeah, if you can send it to Justin and let's just, let's, let's first figure out if they qualify. And make sure that we're clean on that, and then we can make a decision, one way or the other.
I think it's, it's setting the precedent, if we do this for one organization, our, our other organization is now going to come forward asking for donations, that, not service-related.
I don't disagree with your point of view, I mean, I, but I, I just want to make sure we do our homework.
Yeah.
Because if they don't qualify, it makes the decision really easy. Any, any questions, gentlemen, from the, about these, these pieces? Yeah, please.
Just wanted to say, this is, this was a task years ago that the town council took on and we, we turned it over to the Budget Committee for a couple of reasons. Get you guys more deeply involved and also relieve us of having to, it's kind of like playing Santa Claus and it's a hard, it's hard. This, what you did is hard. And so I just want to express my appreciation for the hard work and the research that goes with that.
Tom, thank you. It also opens our eyes to the services that the residents are looking for and what these organizations do for the Londonderry residents also. There's a lot of great people out there doing great things for us.
So Christine would like to say something. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Christine Patton, I'm on Budget Committee. And I just wanted to say that in regards to the Girl Scouts, because it's a community service, they have other ways that they can do fundraising and stuff and I withdrew my money that I had originally allocated to them because I felt like the food bank would be a better choice to allocate the funds to. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Christine. Could you tell me a little bit more about, I'm, I'm sorry, Joe, you-
Yeah, no, I just want to, we're talking a lot about the Girl Scouts and number one, I thought that, they said that sort of the troop is from Londonderry, right?
All of them are.
So it goes back to Londonderry? And the other thing is, I think we're talking about three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, so I just want to make sure that was, was clear.
Just keep in mind, it's setting the precedent for other organizations coming forward next year.
Yep.
Hey, wait, you did this for the Girl Scouts, why can't you not do it for us? I just want to make sure we set the line here and just make a decision.
And I just want to make one more comment, I think the, the program that you guys laid out here is awesome, appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
This is really kind of revolutionary here, that, I think, to Council Dolan, sometimes we struggle with it and this kind of puts everything in perspective, so it's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Clerk?
Exactly. Mm-hmm. Yep. I agree.
So the only question I have is, is Harbor Homes, the transitional housing in that, out of Nashville, is that who they are?
I believe so, yes.
So what compelled us to, to get involved with them, just out of curiosity?
So, some of the questions that we'd answered on the online portal, portal that they answered, they have to represent a certain percentage or they have to show that they represent or serve Londonderry residents. And I, I don't know the exact number, but it was between like two and five percent, so.
Really, wow.
Yeah, some of Londonderry's residents use their services.
Okay, interesting. Okay, any further questions?
Just real quick, I think the one that really jumped out to us was the Sunshine Soup Kitchen. And that was, their remarks were outstanding, the amount of residents that use, that use those services, the Londonderry residents that use it was just, were just surprised about the number of services that, that they provide and the residents that they service.
Okay.
That was, that's the one you're going to see an increase in, and I think the entire Budget Committee agreed on that.
So, any questions? Any further questions? All right, so we'll take this under advisement, we will consider the two percent cut as part of the overall budget. Is there anything else this evening that I have not covered? Anybody else, any questions? Seeing nothing, this is a workshop, so I will call this meeting, I don't think I need a motion. I will call this meeting a conclusion for this evening. We will be picking budgets up again, as among other things, at the November 30th Town Council meeting. And thank you for your, what? Yeah, we'll be meeting here in the cafeteria again on November 30th. And to everyone in Londonderry, have a happy Thanksgiving. Good night.